So Ajit Varma, thank you for coming in.
Thanks for having me.
Welcome. You have positioned yourself in this race so far in the early days as being the pro-growth candidate. And you're also a candidate who has had little to no actual involvement in Palo Alto City government and Palo Alto politics. I'm wondering if you could summarize for us sort of your philosophy about your priorities and just how you would propose to impact Palo Alto's direction?
Sure. So I've been worried about Palo Alto and just like the general Bay Area of being like the place where everyone can have an opportunity to achieve their dreams and have an impact that they want on the world for a while now. And I think this is like a macro shift where other cities across the country and across the world are being a better place for opportunities for people. And so I've been worried about this for a while, but then two things happened over the last six months. It really made me a lot more worried and really made me want to help in the ways that I can help our city. So one was COVID. So COVID, I think, had a big acceleration of this macro shift. So companies that were here or people that did work really hard to be here found that there's no benefits to being here. Like you're working from your home, you can work from your home in another area that's much more affordable and cheaper and still take your sort of like high salaries from Silicon Valley jobs into those areas. So also, I think the response like Palo Alto, a lot of people in Palo Alto has had is great, companies should leave. Like that's great for us. Like, and I don't think that that's, that is good for us. I think that we want these like innovative companies and I think that we want the next set of innovative companies like the Apples, the Googles, the Teslas to be founded here. The other event what happened was I had a lot of discussions with like Adrian Fine, who I think was a very pro-growth person on City Council. And he ultimately decided, made the decision not to run anymore. That along with the other pro-growth candidate, Liz Niss, not running, made me really worried that this might change into a dynamic of City Council where it's just like very obstructionistic in terms of growth. And so that's kind of like ultimately why I decided that it was just like so important to run. The other thing is there's been a lot of like, I'd say, discussion of like echo chambers and, you know, needing to say like, we need diversity of opinions on the City Council. And so that's diversity of backgrounds, it's a diversity of careers, it's diversity of things. And so I definitely think that you need people on the council that do have background in city politics. But I also think if that's the only background you have, then we're not going to fix the problems that they've been unable to solve for like the last 20 years.
Do you feel that the views you have about growth and housing and commercial development is a reflection of the majority view of the citizens of Palo Alto? Or are you thinking of your role on the council as persuading the community of the right, of the direction you're advocating?
Yeah, so I think that it's, to be honest, like both. So obviously Palo Alto has like very strong views in both directions. And so I think that City Council should be reflective of the views of Palo Alto. I don't think that my view is to change people's opinion. I think my view is like, I want to represent the people who do believe in growth. I think it's important for City Council to have both viewpoints. I think the diversity of opinions is really important and I want to collaborate with the people who have different viewpoints. I think one of the big problems with like national politics is people view that their answer is the right answer and then no one else is right. But I think like compromise is important and I think working with people who believe in, I want to make like people who have different viewpoints, like make sure that they feel like Palo Alto is a great city for them to live as well. I got to want to displace people who've been here at all.
So obviously, being welcoming to more commercial growth as well as housing, there are some tensions there because of the jobs-housing imbalance. What is your vision for how to welcome both?
So I would say that I'm definitely like advocating for like growth in both areas. And I'd say like housing growth disproportionately higher than office growth in order to recover from the imbalances that have been created over, you know, the last few decades. And so that's like my own personal viewpoint, but you know, of course, this isn't a problem that's going to be solved in a year or two years, three years. Like I think that it is like a multi-like decade shift that's going to take place. And so like I would definitely say like that when I look at like individual developments is where I would start. And so even like if you want to change everything, like, you know, property developers are going to take a want, leases are going on for a long time. But I'd say like, okay, that there's, you know, developments that have been proposed on like San Antonio Avenue that I would be supportive of. There's developments in downtown Palo Alto, like they say, that are there that I would be supportive. And those aren't all like gigantic developments. A lot of those are actually just like, you know, one-unit, two-unit kind of like developments that have like taken a very long time to get approval. I got an email from someone who's like very passionate. They've been trying to get a project to build basically housing on the top two floors and their office space on the bottom floor for eight years now. And effectively they left Palo Alto because they couldn't do that. So to me, like you created two units of housing, you created one unit for yourself to live in, creates no traffic, creates no transportation problems, creates like housing benefits, creates like a great like opportunity to like live, work in the community. And like, that's, that's great. Like, why did, why are we still not approved this after eight years? And those are like, I'd say like, I think that's like an idea to like go after the extremes, but I definitely feel like that's not, that's not even a place to start. Like for me, it's starting with small businesses, starting with small developments, starting with small units. And then over time, like making a change, but it's not like waking up tomorrow and like having the Las Vegas trip on, you know, one-on-one, which makes like no sense in Palo Alto.
So you'd start with streamlining processes, it sounds like. But the RENA, the regional housing allocation for Palo Alto is going to be somewhere between 4,400, 6,500.
Yeah.
That's a lot of, that's a lot of housing. How can we take that bite of the apple?
Yeah, so I think that the problem is that we've never hit our commitments today. Like year after year, you're kind of like, well, you can set higher goals, but you haven't even hit the goals that we have. So when I look at those goals, I'm like, I don't, I don't even really know, like you can set any goal that you want. Like, we have to like start with just like the basics of just like making some progress at all, which is kind of like where, where I think that our current politics in City Council haven't even made progress on creating tens of units in the city per year.
I think a lot of people would hear your ideas about growth and commercial development and they would say, how can we encourage more commercial development if we're not ensuring that we're actually making progress on bringing down the housing imbalance that exists now?
Yeah.
So how would you approach that?
So I'll give you just a great example from my personal case. So there was a property in downtown Palo Alto, like three blocks off of University that came up for sale. So I have the resources in order to buy that and I wanted to buy it in order to create more housing. And so for me though, like I, you know, like I want to like break even, like I to, you know, to be honest, like it's like one thing is like saying, you know, other than enough like people who can put billions of dollars and like not ever make the economics work. I don't think that that's, that's realistic. So when I look at the economics work, the price of land in Palo Alto is very expensive. And so for me to put housing on that was infeasible. So instead, I just gave up. I didn't bother. But if I was able to put one floor of house, or like office space, because the rents are so high on like office space in like downtown Palo Alto. If I was able to put like one floor of office, I would have been able to build at least like 15 units of housing in that spot. And to me, it's like, well, what is the next result of this? Nothing happened. Like, we didn't get, we didn't get anything. And will you ever get housing there? No, because the economics don't work for the price of land and the rents that you can get in Palo Alto for the housing. And so this is to me, it's like, I think that it's like, it's like this very binary view and that's why like nothing has progressed. But if you like sat, okay, the Palo Alto City Council would have approved this project and I would have built like one floor of office that would allow me to subsidize all the housing. And I'm not looking for like making a profit, I just want to create more housing. I would have 100% done that deal and I would have bought that land and I would have made that happen. Instead, I just gave up. And I believe that there's a lot of people in Palo Alto who will, who would make that happen. And I don't think it's out of the character of the city. We're not talking about 100 units. We're talking about like 50 units and it's basically building it in the right density for that land. And I think it's a great spot. It's like easy walking to downtown. It's like building, you can imagine a lot of people who work on that bottom floor living in the building. And that's what I, what I mean by like, I think you need to have both, not, not like one or the other. Because I think if you live in that world, nothing, nothing will got done, like nothing has gotten done for the last 20 years.
So would you, would you require a developer of a commercial office building, say a 50,000-foot commercial office building to provide a mechanism for there being enough housing to house the employees that that building will be able to?
Yes, so I think we should do that, but I think that the City Palo Alto should make it feasible for that person to do it. So if you say like, okay, you have to do this, but in order to do this, you have to create something that's also equally not economically feasible. Like, okay, you can't do density, you're going to have to like buy $100 million worth of land in Palo Alto and build single-unit housing. There's no land for that, like it's infeasible to build that. So I'd say like, I would, I would 100% do that, but I would also make the conditions like actually like feasible that companies could make it, could make it work.
So state legislation has been trying to loosen restrictions on zoning across the state, including ideas like putting fourplexes in R1 zones. And I'm wondering what you think of that type of solution for the housing crisis?
Yeah, so I think that those are prescriptive solutions, but there are other ways to solve the same problem. And so I'd say that there should be like, you could say that the city can pass a law that says that your jobs-to-housing ratio has to be X. And then I think it should be up to the city to figure out what makes the most sense. And so Palo Alto is like unique because it is, you know, we do have like two train stops, but you know, if you use like just a rough thing of like, get half a mile from a train station. Like, as long as that law passes, then you're like, our problems are fixed. Well, that doesn't mean our problems are fixed. It means that you just like have a law, like maybe developers don't develop there. And so I would say like, it has to be more like, what is the actual problem you're trying to solve? There should be laws that are potentially passed to say, if the city doesn't fix its problem by this time period, then other top-down rules come into place. But I think the city knows better what works for our city. And so I would definitely, I don't support like state coming in and deciding rules for Palo Alto. I think Palo Alto should solve its own problems in a way that works best for Palo Alto.
So where would you envision additional housing in the city?
So that's where I'd say like, so fourplexes in residential areas will create four units of housing. I think that if you look on El Camino, I think there are many, I'd say, old motels that could be replaced with more dense housing that can create a lot more than four units in a, in a more dense way. And I think that there's a few areas, so like in Barcadero, like on San Antonio Road, like areas of Middlefield, areas near Sand Hill Road, there's El Camino. And like I view, there's so many spaces that I feel like we're going to further than we need to go because we're just not able to figure out solutions out. But I think that we have more than enough areas in Palo Alto to create housing without creating additional things that'll change the character of residential neighborhoods, which I think residential neighborhoods are really important. I think that there's just different kind of like housing and you need housing for different kind of ways. And one of the reasons that I think a lot of people move from like San Francisco to Palo Alto and other areas is to like live in, live in residential neighborhoods. And I think they're very important to Palo Alto as well.
I assume when you say Barcadero Road, you mean east of Bay Shore, Barcadero Road?
Right.
I think the sentiment that Palantir and Facebook have unimpeachable values isn't something that's universally shared these days. What exactly do you mean when you talk about values of companies like that?
Yeah.
Which have been under a lot of criticism last few years.
I think that it's like easy to criticize like the negatives of companies. And I would definitely say like companies have made mistakes. Like I think that every company could be better. And I think that, you know, if you look at like the Bay Area, like you have companies that have very different viewpoints that are both like have like, you know, influence by Palo Alto. So like Steve Jobs, he lived in Palo Alto. Steve Jobs, you know, obviously he had a huge impact on Apple when he went back there. I'd say Apple has like varied, other like side of the spectrum from like Palantir and Facebook, but I think that both are like big impacts. I think you can focus on like the negative, but I think that these companies like have had a lot of like benefits to the company. And so I can talk about like each one, but like, it might not like Palantir is about like national security. You know, they're not going to like publicize like every single like negative case that's out there for national security purposes. But I mean, the reality is that like, you know, if you talk to be like a Palantir, like they believe that they are helping safety of the world and like making sure that terrorism doesn't happen, making sure that a lot of like, you know, like massive problems aren't happening. Same thing Facebook is like about like helping people connect, helping people like stay with their community. I can like tell you that.
So you don't think disinformation is a big problem when it comes to Facebook?
I think it is a problem.
You don't think working with ICE is a big problem?
Yeah, I definitely think that these are problems and I think these companies are solving the problems. And I'd rather them solved by like people who are based in like Palo Alto and like our value system than those companies like have the influences of, I'd say, maybe a different value system. I personally think that, that a lot of like what you see, like things like, well, these companies are doing a lot to like improve like climate change, which is like a bigger issue. A lot of the world doesn't even believe in climate change. So when you look at like companies like Facebook, it's like getting to like carbon neutral, creating renewable energy to power its data centers. Like a lot of those things are, I think, formed in values that were here. And I think that Stanford has a big part of that as well. But I think there are a lot of like great companies that have done a lot of good for the world that were originally in Palo Alto.
Understanding that good jobs are important, we want to have them here in Palo Alto. The City Council needs to kind of weigh the responsibilities and the impacts of these companies on transportation, on city services. So business taxes have been thought about, proposed, haven't gotten there yet for the city. What kind of responsibility and financing do you think businesses should be, should be charged or should pay?
Yeah, so I think that businesses should definitely pay their fair share. So a lot of our tax revenue in Palo Alto comes from sales taxes. Sales taxes, like businesses like paying taxes. There's on the ballot proposition, like Prop 15, to like increase the tax revenues like substantially. I think the estimate is like that would increase like property taxes by like $12 billion in California. So I think that there's like definitely flaws and loopholes in our system that mean companies aren't necessarily paying all the impact that they have. And so I would, I would close those. But then ultimately, like I think that companies are a big part of like the tax revenue. If you look at like Palo Alto, property taxes, like Stanford Mall is a significant driver of like tax revenue for the city. I'd say like, we could say like, well, we don't have Stanford Mall here, like let's shut it down and like move it somewhere else. I wouldn't do that personally. I think a lot of people want to do that. I think a lot of people don't want any businesses in Palo Alto and want us to turn into like Atherton or Los Altos Hills. And I personally like, don't want that. And that's like kind of like why I personally want to like encourage those businesses to be here. And I think that tax revenue is there to support it.
And do you think that there are, that you would not be in favor then of any additional taxes on corporations or policies that would, would make sure that they pay for transportation programs, TDMs, things like that?
Yeah, so I think that it just depends on each individual issue. So like obviously there's like a parking, in lieu of parking fees in like downtown Palo Alto. So I think that that's reasonable. Like if you're like hiring more employees and the city needs to build a parking garage for your employees and your customers, then businesses should pay those like fees in order to like get those parking structures built. You know, the land is there, like it's on Hamilton. So I think that that's like for sure, like having the mitigation of those, those increased costs should definitely be there. But then I think that there's additional things that aren't necessarily like mitigating, like say like head taxes. And I think that those, to me, like additional head taxes or unfair income taxes, like to me, like those aren't like mitigating the, the impact of the business. I think they're going far beyond the impact of the business. And so like I believe in mitigation of, of the impact, but not like going beyond to discourage, discourage businesses from being here and going somewhere else.
But how does a sales tax mitigate those impacts?
Well, sales taxes revenue for the city, so if a car dealership.
But it doesn't mitigate the impacts of those businesses being there. So for example, Facebook doesn't pay sales tax, law firms don't pay sales tax, venture capital firms don't pay sales tax, Google doesn't pay the sales tax.
Yeah.
So why should they have a free ride?
So I think it's just again, like goes business by business. And so when you're talking about, like say, companies like Facebook, I think that that's where like there's really opportunity, why I go back to, say, companies like, you know, Google that are building mixed use. And so they're building things like public benefits, like housing in return for having like office space. So I think with there, like you can actually mitigate it in other ways that don't have like this pure, like ways you've thought about it in the past, like. But you can, you can create public benefits and we've done that in Palo Alto before, saying in return for being here, there's public benefits. Parking is a mitigation, but there are public benefits that companies can create too.
But what's your objection to a head tax? I don't understand why. If you've got a number of employees that are based in the community, why wouldn't that be more fair than having a sales tax-reliant local government?
So I think that head taxes discourage employment if the city next to you does not charge a head tax.
Before COVID, transportation and housing were kind of consistently been found to be the biggest issue of concern for residents. And I know we talked quite a bit about housing. I wanted to get your views on transportation and specifically the great separation debate that's kind of going to be huge for this council and the next one.
Yeah.
What do you think of the options on the table and do you have any thoughts?
Specifically with great separation or just overall transportation?
We can start with great separation, but then we can branch out to other areas.
Yeah, so with great separation, I mean, there's been a lot of discussion about like tunnels versus like, you know, there's like a whole like difference in options. So I think that there is a balance of like, what is the option that's like feasible, that has, I'd say, the best long-term outcome for Palo Alto? So this like decision is going to affect Palo Alto for 100 years. And so I think that there is, I would have a desire to create a tunnel and as much of a portion of it as possible. So from what I've seen is that, you know, you can go to a 2% slope and create a tunnel in most of like South Palo Alto. In the other part of Palo Alto, there's already underpasses at Barcadero, University Avenue. And so it's, I think that that solution, I think when you amortize the cost over like 100 years for those, those expenses, like I don't actually think it's as expensive as, as it seems. Like when you're throwing out a big number, like it costs $2 billion, $2 billion over the course of 100 years, isn't like when you see a number, stuff is going to cost every resident like $60,000. That's like if every resident paid for it over the course of like one year and it's like the maximum cost and it's a tunnel through the entire city. But I think that there's a lot of opportunities to actually use like technology and solutions and also like the value of the land that you can also then again use for, for other uses as well, like housing.
How would you finance that?
Bonds. So bonds and then you're, and then you're paying for it over the course of a long period of time.
So you'd have multiple billion dollars worth of bonds for the city Palo Alto?
Well, I don't think it'll cost multiple billions of dollars. I mean, like the essence I saw was like, it's $2 billion if you build a tunnel through the entire like course of like Palo Alto. I haven't seen any estimates of like what it would cost to actually build a tunnel in the portion that is actually needed for, like you don't need a tunnel through all of, all of Palo Alto. And I think that it's like a 2% like grade is totally something that can be achieved by working with like Caltrain. So I think that the cost can be brought down like significantly. And I think this is like sort of like, just like, like when you're only looking at these extreme examples, then you're like, yeah, could you build a tunnel there? Like it's totally infeasible. Like you're not going to create a $4 billion bond to like do that. But I think that we need to fully explore like the options of like actually doing, like what is the minimum necessary at the highest like quality? And I think that means a tunnel for, for South Palo, which I haven't actually seen any estimates or analysis done on that cost.
How do you feel about the city's overall strategy for managing transportation problems? And do you have any ideas for curtailing traffic, assuming we get back to traffic after COVID?
Yeah. So I think biking is like my preferred method to get around the city. I think the city is like very bikeable in most of the city, it's very flat. We have like bike boulevards. So I personally like bike every, pretty much everywhere, like I can bike. I live almost like at that one end of the city and I bike to Mitchell Park like all the time, which is like at the end of the city. So like I think that biking is the best way. I think a lot of people that I know that live in Palo Alto like contribute to traffic because they work outside of Palo Alto. I personally like work in Menlo Park, so it's not like that difficult. But if you're working like further in the city, like I think that public transportation is like by far like my preference. Public transportation along with biking is, is what I think we should, we should encourage.
But how would you go about public transportation? I mean, the city just eliminated the shuttle program, so you have some VTA buses. Like where do you think the city should invest kind of its funding with those transportation?
Yeah, so I think that like there's some like, what I think is like pretty interesting examples that I think will have like much more major impact. So you have like the Dumbarton Rail that has been like shut down for a long time. And so there's like a lot of talk of working with like private companies actually like resurrect the Dumbarton Railway. And so then you would create a new station in like East Palo Alto. And so then, like things like that, it's like, these are like the problems, like getting from East Bay to here is a, is a really difficult. Like there's no like BART, there's a lot of like opposition to things like connecting BART in a way that like actually makes it more accessible to Caltrain. So I'd say like, I would focus on like these, like other, like bigger things, like can you actually connect like East Bay? Can you build a station and work with, with places like in East Palo? And then can you create like bus hubs there to do like the last mile or work with bike sharing or carpooling or like these other options to actually like make it so that places like, like East Bay can actually connect to Palo Alto through public transportation, which is very difficult to do right now.
One of the issues that's going to come to the council probably right after you get elected will be the Castelaya expansion proposal. I'm wondering what your thoughts are about that plan and whether you are inclined to support it or not.
Yeah, so I think that there's a lot of like negative, I'd say, past with Castelaya in terms of like them basically like breaking the law in terms of like what was allowed and what was, what was agreed to at the city. So Castelaya is in an R1 neighborhood, like it is like residential. I think that it is like an exception, it was created like a long time ago. I think that it's like very reasonable to say like, it is, it is like fine where it's right now. Like I haven't heard a lot of like compelling use cases for like the reason for the growth. Castelaya is a nonprofit, it doesn't provide like tax revenue. I think we have like great schools in like Palo Alto. I think there's a lot of questions on like, is it benefiting the residents in stuff like Palo Alto with like a close school, like unlike say Stanford, which allows courses to happen on Stanford, allows like, you know, a lot of benefits. So I'd say like, I think that it has to be a proposal, has to come through where Castelaya is a benefit to the surrounding area as well as the city in return for expansion. And so like, kind of like with all the proposals I have, is like, it's like, I don't believe like office buildings for the sake of office buildings. It's office buildings for the sake of benefiting Palo Alto. It's like housing for the sake of benefiting Palo Alto. Anything like Castelaya is like, I haven't yet seen the proposals that, that I believe are a sufficient value for Palo Alto. But I think that there is definitely a solution that's there, that has to be worked through. I think with this, like you have a lot of like entrenchment on both sides, where it's like some are like totally against any like improvements. And then you have like Castelaya, which like, you know, you look at a lot of the proposals and it's not fully mitigating the concerns that the residents nearby have. And I think that there's fully a solution there, but I think that you really have to force both sides to come up with a solution that's mutually beneficial, which, which hasn't, hasn't happened yet.
So how would you do that though? That's normally a staff function and it's also, you know, they're in a, you know, they're in a legal process that they're going through for approval and ultimately council members have to.
Yeah, so if you look at like Castelaya, so it's like, you know, can you create like public benefits? So you know, like in the renderings, like they have, they're building a swimming pool. Like, why can't members of the public use that swimming pool? Can, you know, there be tuition set aside for people in the Palo Alto community that allows them to have like, say, free tuition there if they can't afford it? Should slots be held at Castelaya for Palo Alto residents? Should they pay taxes to like mitigate like parking? Like, so these are all things that they can do. They're, you know, like there is, like they're, they're charging like a lot of money to like be in school, like very rich people are sending their kids there. And so it's like, for this like benefit, I think that you can definitely like create public benefits that are, that are not currently being proposed. And so I think as part of like City Council, it's like you can easily go through and say like, you know, how many people from Palo Alto are going to go to the school? Are spots going to be set aside? Are people in the public going to be able to use the facilities? Are, you know, are there like enough like parking that's going to be created? Like, why does it have to expand to like the size of school? You know, like the number says, it needs to expand because it was that big in the past. Like these things like don't make sense to me. And it turns into like a very like controversial issue because it's like framed as you don't support education. If you, if you don't support this, like that's, you can totally support education, education is like super important, but why not have both? Like you can create education, more educational opportunities and also create it so that it's a benefit for the residents of Palo Alto.
So just to summarize, you're saying that if you were on the council, you would propose conditions that would require the kinds of public benefits that you've just described?
Right.
And if they don't want to provide those, then they wouldn't get their permission?
Right, right.
We only have a couple of minutes left and I'd like to ask you about the subject of police reform and some of the things that have arisen out of the national protests against George Floyd's killing, et cetera.
Yeah.
What, how would you describe your priorities in this area? Is there work to be done in Palo Alto to reform our practices with the police? How do you, how do you feel about the defund police so-called movement to shift resources towards non-police activities, mental illness and so forth?
Right, so I think that. Right, so I think that there's, there's clearly been, been a lot of like troubling events. So I think there's a lot of like systemic problems across the country. Palo Alto has had a history of these issues from recent times to, to many decades ago. And I think that there's a lot of reforms that need to be made. I think a lot of this has to do with like training. So you have like things like eight can't wait of like teaching, you know, police in order to not use like certain techniques that are, that are violent. I think there's a lot of like culture around like militarization of the police force that we need to, to remove and get rid of. And I think that you really need to like make it so that the police are basically like helping the community. I think the police are an important part of like safety. I think safety is very much one of the reasons why Palo Alto is a desirable place to live. So I think that this really comes down to like helping train police in the right way, helping them make sure that they understand, you know, the right techniques in order to, to prevent escalation. I think a lot of this stuff is actually done from fear as well. So I think police are afraid. I think the citizens are afraid. And so there's a lot of unnecessary escalations that happen. And I think the same thing on the community side, like I think that we need to encourage people to not like, call like the police for, for I'd say like a lot of the minor things that people have called police for the resulted in like pretty tragic like outcomes. Because you know, you don't necessarily know like, a police is like, okay, this event is happening. And I think that they're just from a fear place, like going in with extreme negative outcomes as being possibilities that they want to, to mitigate. So I think like having like community resources, having, having like mental health resources are like incredibly important to augment. And a lot of like the cases that currently are viewed as police should be solving them, I think that we can solve through community, community services as well. And so a lot of like, when you look at like the budget and stuff, I think that regardless of, also like, can there be efficiencies? Like I think that there definitely can be efficiencies that, that are made. And I would say like, looking at those efficiencies, like I think, do we need a new police headquarters? Like I, I'm not convinced that we, that we need that. Like I think that is like a very high expense that I haven't seen like justification for that. But that, there's not defunding in, in my view at all. It's like, it's a, it's efficient use of money. But I think that a lot of this is like cultural, a lot of this is training, a lot of this is like attitudes that definitely like need to be fixed so that nobody should be fearful of walking around in their neighborhood that they might have like a negative outcome if they have an encounter with the police. Like that should never, that'd be happening. Like when you have an encounter with police, you should be like, this is great. The police is helping me.